All right, good afternoon, everybody. It is three o'clock, we're going to get started. Thank you for joining the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. Today, we will be hearing Executive Appointments Nomination 21-0030, Christopher J. Shorter, City Administrator and Chief Administrative Officer. We will start with Mr. Shorter, who will give a brief introduction, a little bit about himself. Then we will move on to some people who will be here to speak about this position and also about Mr. Shorter. And then we will come back to Mr. Shorter to talk to him a little bit more in depth about his vision for the city. Before I get started, I do want to thank Mayor Scott for his fortitude in creating this position when he was a member of the City Council. He put in legislation that created this position. I was, I was and always have been a strong supporter of having a city administrator for Baltimore City. We truly need it. It's worth everything to have somebody who is focused on the operations and business of the city. So I am excited to have a city administrator, as I'm sure many other members of the council are. And so I've had the opportunity to meet Mr. Shorter. He's very impressive, sounds like, seems like a very great person to lead the city at this time with this position and to really set the standard of what the city administrator in Baltimore City does. And so I thank you, Mr. Shorter, for joining us. And if you don't mind, just take it away.
All right. Well, thank you Chairperson Schleifer and members of the council and council staff. For the record, again, I am Christopher J. Shorter, your acting city administrator, and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today and discuss my deep passion for and commitment to public service, my educational and professional background, and to touch on why I believe I am best positioned to serve the citizens of Baltimore and help implement the mayor's vision for a more effective, reliable, and equitable city. I would like to also acknowledge and thank Mayor Brandon Scott for his tireless leadership and advocacy for the citizens of Baltimore and for the confidence he has in me to assume such a critical role, leading a city's government during such a critical time in the city's history. Over the last several weeks, I've had the honor to meet each of you in order to gain a better understanding of your expectations of our government and of me as your government's administrative officer. I've also had the privilege of joining the mayor in dozens of meetings with neighborhood and community associations and to talk with residents, business owners, and leaders from many of our city's important institutions. I would like to also thank and acknowledge the leaders who will appear before you this afternoon to speak about my commitment to public service, the principles of good government, and the core belief that professional city management is essential to growing and sustaining an effective and customer-focused democratic local government. Former Mayor Vincent C. Gray, ICMA President Mark Ott, former city administrator Rashad Young, county administrator Stacy Rogers, and executive director Mark Schindler are all exceptional public servants and distinguished leaders, and I consider it a real honor that they have taken time out of their respective schedules to appear before you today. Mr. Chair, I will pass it back to you for testimony from the speakers, starting with former Mayor Vincent Gray.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shorter. Mayor Gray, please introduce yourself and give us your testimony. You're on mute.
Just a second, Mr. Chair.
Chairman. Am I muted now, Mr. Chairman? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I am delighted to be here, and it is absolutely without reservation that I speak in support of Chris Shorter, not only for his professional accomplishment, but also for his character, which is such an important part of these jobs. The breadth of his experience in the District of Columbia and otherwise has really prepared him to serve the city of Baltimore with excellence in overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city government. He's highly educated, having received a master of public administration degree from the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public and International Affairs and a bachelor of science degree in economics from Florida A&amp;M University as well, Mr. Chairman. He continued his education and development, demonstrating an incredibly strong interest in lifelong learning, which is a true sign of his intellectual maturity. Just look at his educational background. You know, he continued to prepare himself at the University of Pennsylvania's Wharton School, the International City of County Management Association Senior Executive Institute at the University of Virginia, the Darden School, which is quite renowned, the Center for Excellence in Public Leadership at George Washington University, which happens to be my alma mater, the Certificate Program for Public Sector Leaders at Georgetown University, another storied university. So he's really prepared himself. I have observed Chris's career for quite some time, over a number of years, dating back to when he was with the district government and since he worked for the District of Columbia government during my time as mayor. I appreciate how he demonstrated a true dedication to the mission of his organization, working professionally as the Department of Youth and Rehabilitation Services Chief of Staff and also the Chief Operating Officer, and also serving DYS in a volunteer and mentor role. His career speaks well of what Chris has been able to do over the years, having served in two different mayoral administrations and in multiple agencies, significantly, significant reports such as having been the Director of the Department of Public Works, Chief Operating Officer for the Department of Health, the Chief Operating Officer for the District Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services, the Chief of Staff for the District Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services. He's demonstrated on more than one occasion, high-level leadership across municipalities as well as in regions further even the District of Columbia. For example, the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, the experience in DC, of course, and in Austin, Texas, one of his most recent engagements where he was Assistant City Manager for Health, Environment, Culture, and Lifelong Learning. He has adeptly executed his responsibilities and duties for literally billions, millions of dollars for hundreds of thousands of lives on the course of his distinguished public service career. He's a man of character, a man of fantastic character, which I think is perhaps one of his most important attributes and one of the most difficult things for people to learn in a capacity of leadership. He's a nice guy, and I have no reservations in saying that. He's a collaborator, he's an effective leader, not just from the front, but also among those he leads. He's consistent, you can count on him, he's focused on mastery and even more focused on positive outcomes for the communities that he serves. So I want to say, I want to appreciate the work that was alluded to earlier, as with Mayor Scott of Baltimore. I think making the decision to have this position speaks well to the City Council, and certainly the selection of Chris is a tremendous statement about Brandon Scott, Mayor Brandon Scott. And I know that Chris did a fine job as a city administrator for the city of Baltimore. So thank you very much for having me today, and I think with Chris, with Chris in this position, you have a genuine gem who will do phenomenally well.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gray. And next, I will call on ICMA President Mark Ott.
Good on.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and council members. My name is Mark Ott, and I am the Executive Director and CEO of the International City County Management Association, also known as ICMA. For those of you who are not familiar with ICMA, we are a Washington DC-based organization that is the world's leading association of professional city county managers and administrators. We have 12,000 members here in the United States and around the world. Since our founding in 1914, it has been ICMA's mission to advance professional local government management through leadership, innovation, and ethics. Our reach is very broad, as I've indicated, international in fact, with members in over 20 countries. And we strive every day to provide our members with best-in-class resources, professional development opportunities, so that they can be prepared to navigate the complex and often blistering pace of change driving our communities, especially today. That said, I am very happy to be part of today's confirmation hearing. I know this represents an historic event for the city of Baltimore and its residents. Confirming Chris's appointment as your first-ever city administrator signals your commitment to a professionally trained and experienced administrator that will deliver public services in an equitable, efficient, and effective manner. Now, you don't have to take my word today, you can certainly do your own research, but I do want to share with you why local professional management and why hiring Chris will make a difference in Baltimore. Since 2008, the majority of communities recognized by the National Civic League's All-American City Awards are run by professional administrators. According to a 2011 IBM Global Business Study, municipalities run by professional administrators were 10% more efficient than those without them. But you know, there's something that really stands out, and I know it's true in Chris's case as well, and that is that administrators who are members of ICMA are bound to a stringently enforced code of ethics that goes beyond those required by law. As an ICMA member, Chris, just like his 12,000 fellow members, has agreed to abide by our code of ethics, which specifies no less than 12 principles of personal and professional conduct, including a dedication to the cause of good government. So as the city of Baltimore embarks on a new era of professional city management, let me applaud you for making and taking such a courageous step, and especially for considering Chris Shorter's nomination as your first city administrator. I can't think of anyone more qualified than helped lead this city, this great city into the future. I truly believe that Chris is the right person at the right time to move your community forward. In his 20-plus years in local government, he has distinguished himself as a person of honesty, transparency, and accountability in the various jurisdictions where he has served. As you look at all that he's done, all that he's accomplished, you can clearly see that his professional life has been solely dedicated to public service, and I truly believe that ICMA has played a part in Chris's success. So in closing today, I want to thank the Rules and Oversight Committee for allowing me the opportunity to speak and to show support for an ICMA member, as hopefully he assumes on a permanent basis this new and important role as Baltimore's city administrator. Mr. Chairman, I thank you and the members for having me today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ott. Next, we will move on to former city administrator Rashad Young.
Good on.
You're on mute, Mr. Young.
Oh, he's on.
We got Gary. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the nomination of Christopher Shorter to serve as the first chief administrative officer for the city of Baltimore. After serving more than 20 years in local government, with 16 of those serving as city manager of various cities across the country, including Dayton, Ohio, and Greensboro, North Carolina, Alexandria, Virginia, and most recently having served as a city administrator of the District of Columbia, I know how critically important the position of city administrator of the city of Baltimore is to you and to the residents of your city. I've had the privilege of knowing and working with Chris throughout my tenure as city administrator of Washington DC, having first met him when I was city manager of Alexandria, Virginia, when he was serving as the Chief Operating Officer of the DC Department of Health. Even across the Potomac, Chris's reputation as a skilled and thoughtful, talented professional carried throughout the DC, Maryland, and Virginia region. That's why in 2015, when I became city manager, city administrator of the district, one of the first people I thought to bring onto the team was Chris Shorter. It was because of his widely acclaimed success in that role that I supported and endorsed his appointment to lead the DC Department of Public Works, an agency of 1,500 employees that provided a bedrock service to local government for which there is little tolerance for error, trash, and recycling collection. I believe that there are few truisms that are tied to the success of a city administrator. Chief among them is that the city administrator must be absolutely committed to the ideals of good government. That means the administrator is committed to seeking out and applying best practices, inspiring a culture of continuous improvement, and establishing a framework of performance management and accountability. The administrator must be an honest broker in his relationship and dealings with the mayor and city council. Successful managers are straight shooters, honest, direct, and have a deep respect and appreciation for the policy-setting prerogative of the legislative branch and the democratic process that results in laws and policies being promulgated. The administrator also has to have an abiding commitment to genuine and meaningful civic engagement, coalition building, and strong partnerships that serve to improve neighborhoods and communities. Everything I know about and have seen from Christopher Shorter gives me great confidence that he understands, has practiced, and will live by these truisms. His experience across so many elements of government has given him a deep and wide experience base. He's worked in juvenile justice, student transportation, health, public works, led budget development processes, procurement, HR, IT, facilities management, performance management, and operations. He has served as an assistant city manager, providing direct oversight of numerous agencies with thousands of employees with budgets of hundreds of millions of dollars. He has done all of these things with fidelity to good government, honest brokering, coalition building, and an insistence on excellence and consistency of performance. Mr. Chairman, I'm so excited for Baltimore's future with Chris Shorter at the helm of the day-to-day management of the organization. He will serve this city, its mayor, this council, and your residents faithfully and well. I wholeheartedly endorse his nomination, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Next up will be county administrator Stacy Rogers. And before you get started, I do have a quick question for you. Now that we will have a city administrator, do we get Drew Beck?
I can't speak, I can't speak on, on that.
Okay.
But we hope that we have collaborative relationships where we can share thoughts and problem solving.
Fair enough. All right, you can take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony as you consider Mr. Christopher Shorter for the appointment as the permanent city administrator for Baltimore City. I am Stacy L. Rogers, County Administrative Officer for Baltimore County, your sister border jurisdiction. Prior to this post, I had the honor of serving as the Director of Baltimore City Department of Social Services, and do know firsthand the critical need for a close working relationship between the city and the county. Having a well-qualified, seasoned administrator who understands inter-jurisdictional cooperation, collaboration, and commitment to a regional outlook is paramount, particularly during unprecedented times as we have experienced over the past year in addressing the global pandemic. The needs of our citizens that we are charged to serve often cross jurisdictional boundaries. The problems and challenges that often confront our residents require mutual cooperation and problem solving, whether it be to identify viable foster homes for children in need, coordinating efforts regarding snow removal, or the unique relationship our two jurisdictions have in sharing and managing our joint water and sewer services. It takes leadership and collaboration among colleagues who are dedicated to problem solving and focus on excellence in governance. In the short time Mr. Shorter has served as the acting city administrator, he certainly has demonstrated these characteristics and even more. It is a pleasure to work with Chris and know that we are able to jointly address issues in a professional, collaborative manner and always remaining focused on the needs of those we are charged to serve. Chris and I are also members, are both members of ICMA and also the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, where we continue to learn and exchange best practices with our fellow colleagues across the country, and we bring those skills and activities home to our region to ensure that we are always, always demonstrating excellence in governance. The role of city administrator is a new role for the city, one that is vital and one that we applaud you for considering. As city and county administrators, we work across the enterprise to ensure that the work of government moves along efficiently and that we have a collaborative spirit among our respective agencies and organizations. We help to implement the vision that our executives articulate for our jurisdictions and for our citizens. Mr. Shorter's record speaks for itself, having served in a number of executive leadership roles here in the region and in other parts of the country. I am honored to work with Chris and to call him a friend and colleague. He brings the skills, professionalism, and passion to this work, something that is needed to move Baltimore's agenda forward. For the aforementioned reasons, I fully support Chris's nomination and humbly urge your favorable consideration. Again, thank you for this opportunity to provide remarks in your consideration for Mr. Shorter's appointment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We will now move on to Mark Schindler.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm thrilled to be here in support of Chris Shorter's nomination and Mayor Scott's nomination to serve as the first chief administrative officer for the city of Baltimore and the city manager. My name is Mark Schindler. I currently serve as Executive Director of the Justice Policy Institute, a national research and policy organization with expertise in criminal and juvenile justice issues. And I'm pleased to join my former colleagues in DC government in support of Chris. I'm speaking from my, my home in DC, but by way of background, I started my legal career almost 30 years ago in Baltimore. I'm a proud graduate of the University of Maryland School of Law, and after law school, I worked for the Maryland Office of the Public Defender, representing children in Baltimore's juvenile court. Later on in my career, I had the honor of serving in several leadership roles within the DC government for the Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services, including serving as general counsel, chief of staff, and interim director. And it was during my time in DC government that I first met Chris Shorter and had the pleasure of working very closely with him. When I was chosen to lead the agency in 2010, I selected Chris as my chief of staff, which is, to this day, one of the best and easiest hires I ever made. And I've remained in touch with Chris since I left the government in 2010, watching his career with admiration and appreciation for his service, both here in Washington DC, in Austin, Texas, and now thankfully in Baltimore. And, and I can say, in my time working with Chris, he led several major and complex initiatives. He consistently achieved excellent outcomes for the agency, and importantly, for the youth and families we served. When I think back to the work that we did together, I think, for example, when we were completing construction of a new youth correctional facility, Chris was the easy and smart choice to not only manage the final steps of overseeing the construction for the new facility, but also to lead the entire effort to move from the old facility into the new one. Now, that may not sound like a complicated process, but I can assure you that closing down an old correctional facility, moving staff and confined youth into a new facility, and ensuring smooth operations is, is a monumental task. As I, as I had observed through my work with Chris, his attention to detail and his excellent management skills were outstanding. But beyond those outstanding management skills, and what makes Chris special, I believe, was the way he engaged with our staff and the young people in our care. He consistently forged personal and positive connections with everyone, and it was always clear that our staff had the utmost respect for Chris and the work he was doing. That respect, of course, paid dividends when there were challenges, and Chris was always the calm, cool-headed manager who was able to have productive communications with a very wide range of stakeholders in order to move things forward constructively. In short, and echoing the themes that you've heard from the other speakers, Chris has a, a unique combination of excellent organizational skills, outstanding ability to communicate with a wide range of people, and being one of the most decent and caring people I've ever met. I think all of this comes together to create a management style and ability that I have no doubt will serve him and the citizens of Baltimore very well in this new position. And finally, when, when Chris was being considered for this position, he and I talked about the opportunity and challenges of serving in this new role. I encouraged Chris to take the job if offered, and as someone who called Baltimore "my home" for years and still cared deeply about the city, I'm glad he's on the team there. I believe strongly that he's the right person at the right time for this position, and I'm confident that Mayor Scott and the residents of Baltimore will have a city manager and chief administrative officer that will serve them well, with humility, integrity, and unquestionably hard work. I strongly encourage approval of Chris Shorter's nomination. I'm happy to be with you today, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes this panel, and so are there any members of the council who have any questions for anyone who just testified? Seeing none. Thank you to those of you who took time out of your day to come and testify on behalf of Mr. Shorter. You're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you don't need to, so you're welcome to leave if you'd like. We'll, we'll treat them nicely even if you guys leave, so thank you. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Shorter to get a little bit more in depth about his plans for the city, what he's seen with his time in the city already, and what he plans to do in the direction of, of this new office. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll say quickly that I can't, I can't say enough how much it means that, that the leaders that you've heard from this afternoon took time out of their day to, to speak. They are all inspirations to me and, and have all, again, led just absolutely amazing careers that have helped countless lives and people. So thank you all for, for, for being here this afternoon. I have always known that I wanted to dedicate my life and career to public service. My passion for public service and more specifically for local government was inspired by my experiences growing up in the city of Detroit. I have always believed that cities can and must be beacons of hope and social justice, and that local governments must be effective at delivering high-quality services and providing customer-centered approaches to quality of life issues. To all residents, especially those who are most vulnerable in communities historically under-resourced, I have used that belief to inspire and drive my educational and professional choices. I have used that belief to inspire and drive my educational and professional choices throughout my career. I began my career as a management associate with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. As some of you may know, the Port Authority is a quasi-government, by-state transportation agency responsible for maintaining the bridges, tunnels, airports, seaports in the World Trade Center site in New York and New Jersey. I rotated through aviation, World Trade Center redevelopment, and the Department of Management and Budget within the Port Authority. And I eventually accepted a permanent position as a senior management analyst with the Office of Organizational Effectiveness and Change Management. I worked with a team of staff trained in Six Sigma and tasked with conducting evaluations of interdepartmental programs, business processes, processes and systems to find defects, redundancies, cost savings throughout the organization. The office saved 175 million and recommended countless improvements in business process changes in over four, in the over four years we spent together. I relocated to the District of Columbia in 2007 and accepted a senior operations role with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Washington. And after only a year at the Boys and Girls Clubs, I joined a team of reform-minded public servants, including Mark Schindler, who you just heard from, and supported a senior, a senior team in what became a full-scale overhaul of the system in which we supported and treated court-involved youth and their families. I went on to serve as a deputy director of Special Education Transportation within the Office of Student Transportation, within the Office of the State Superintendent of Education, and eventually Chief Operating Officer for the Department of Health. When Mayor Bowser was elected, I joined the Office of the City Administrator, Rashad Young, who you also heard from, where I served as the Director of Agency Operations, providing direct oversight of the Offices of Labor Relations, Collective Bargaining, Performance Management, and Agency Operations citywide. I was eventually invited to serve as the Acting Director of Public Works. And with the Public Works team, advanced the city's goals around environmental stewardship, waste reduction, and the use of information technology to improve operational performance. After serving in the role for four years, forging new paths in great strides on environmental issues, I accepted the role as Assistant City Manager focusing on health, environment, culture, and lifelong learning in Austin, Texas. And I am now very excited to be here in Baltimore and even more excited to help implement the mayor's vision for creating a more effective, reliable, and equitable government for citizens, visitors, and those doing business in Baltimore. I am now a proud Baltimore city resident and homeowner and am looking forward to meeting and calling, calling this home and meeting residents as I continue to get to know the city. I'll say that my public service and management philosophy is very straightforward. Provide the highest quality service possible to every person you encounter. I also firmly believe that leadership can be exercised at every level of government by every individual employee. And as we acknowledge the one-year anniversary of the global coronavirus pandemic, many of our employees have continued to demonstrate that philosophy in their steadfast commitment to our city's residents amidst an extraordinary challenging time. The Baltimore city workforce has shown leadership, agility, and perseverance, establishing and executing new ways to work and continue offering city services in support of our most vulnerable populations hardest hit by this pandemic. As I approach the end of my second month here in Baltimore, I've identified a few core areas of focus that I believe will help stabilize our government and set the course for continuous quality improvement. These focus areas include conducting a comprehensive reform of our procurement system to ensure we are leveraging government resources in the most effective and equitable way possible, prioritizing executive recruitment and onboarding to ensure we have the right leaders in place to transform our government, developing a citywide rewards and recognition program to recognize and honor the men and women in our government who consistently go above and beyond, developing customer service guidance for Baltimore city government employees to raise the level of customer service across our entire organization, and begin randomized audits to ensure compliance. Working with the mayor, you and your council colleagues, and the budget team to put forward a, an FY22 budget that aligns resources and ensures fiscal stability and provides the strategic investments in our government and in our city. And finally, working with our deputy city administrative officer and the deputy mayors to advance the mayor's vision and goals around reimagining public safety and public accountability, community and economic development, as well as equity, health, and human services. In closing, as your city administrator, my focus will be on how our government serves our residents, how we measure our service delivery, and how we build and maintain a workforce capable of delivering on our promises. I look forward to working with our city government employees and identifying and inviting opportunities to work in partnership to strengthen city government, improve work experiences for our staff, and enhance the quality of life within the communities and neighborhoods we serve. I look forward to continuing to work with each of you and your council colleagues to ensure our unified vision, way better Baltimore becomes reality. Again, thank you, Chairman. I am happy to answer any follow-up questions you and your colleagues may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shorter. I will start with my first question. As I'm sure you're aware, just the general rule of thumb when it comes to business is you obviously have to give an output more than what you're being, what you're receiving and your pay. And so I think that's a, you know, that's one of the key metrics that people will look at in a year from now as to say, okay, you know, we hired this city administrator. What was our return on investment? Surely, I think there's plenty of ways you can show that return on investment. But my question for you is, what are some of the first few cost savings items that you've identified where we can start seeing some, you know, some, some cost savings and the government, and government running more efficiently? Have you noticed anything in your brief time now that is something that you want to tackle?
Well, in terms of, well, I appreciate that question, Chairman. In terms of return on investment, I would say that we announced earlier this week the procurement reform, and this is a top-to-bottom reform, not just us working with the Bureau here, but the, the entire procurement system. Our, our procurement activity in the city numbers in the billions. And so we, when you think of it that way, you know, my, my, my take-home is a fraction of, of that amount. Ultimately, that reform will help not just our, our employees who are working tirelessly to make sure that we get procurement activity through our government every day, but it will also help our vendors, small and local businesses, who want to engage our government but sometimes find it frustrating. And so what I will say is that that in and of itself will bring a lot of clarity and a lot of goodwill to our government. Now, that said, we are in the process right now of thinking about and working towards a, a budget for FY22 that, that meets the standard of, you know, of tomorrow and, and really balances the needs of our government with the needs of our city and, and our citizens. So I will say even there, really making sure that we have a budget development process that includes voices from you as our elected officials, but our community as well, and exercising the mayor's vision is going to also be critically important. So again, I appreciate the question and I'm, I'm happy to sort of unveil or dig deeper, but, but want to respect time.
Sure. And so, you know, I, I appreciate, I did see that, that announcement. I'm certainly looking forward to hearing more about the, you know, the specifics about it. You know, I've said, one of the things that, that I've pointed out and has come up in conversation many times in city government is that we don't really know, I, I've been in office now, I guess, coming on five years. I don't know the people who are in, you know, that department, the people who are essentially spending our billions of doll, our billions of taxpayer dollars. And so certainly that would be something that I love, I'd love to learn more about and love to see some of the reforms. My, my second question, and we're going to try to give each person two questions and go around robin until all questions are answered. And my second question is regarding, like, our open, our open Baltimore, open source information. And so we have a platform where information is made available publicly, as I'm sure you're aware of. One thing that is not really disclosed like it should be and like it is in many other jurisdictions is what's known as open checkbook and, you know, that kind of business model. Is that something that is, is on your radar and something that you will be working on in the, in the near future about trying to bring more of that expenditures and more transparency around our procurement?
Yes, the ma, again, appreciate that question, Chairman. And yet, yes, the mayor has really committed to making sure that open checkbook is available. It's actually on our 100-day tracker. I will say that I have come to know that there were, there were some changes made last year through legislative reference in that we will, we will need to work towards some clarity there in terms of who owns the rights, if you will, to the open checkbook. But we are certainly prepared to move forward and provide that transparency. We have the skill set within our organization to bring it to bear. We just want to make sure that we, that we don't violate our own code by moving forward without, without the appropriate authority.
Well, that's the beautiful thing about, about code is that we have the ability to change it if necessary. So we're certainly happy to work with you on that. I'm going to go in order of how I've seen everybody. Next up is Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I defer my questions to the end of the first round, please?
Sure. Next up on my screen is Councilman Terrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to this English panel that came and supported Mr. Shorter. And welcome to Mr. Shorter, who happens, will upon nomination and successful confirmation will be a resident of the 7th County Democratic District, which I'm proud of. But I just want to lift up the conversation that I had with Mr. Shorter first before I ask my question and where I found him to be very candid, as well as knowledgeable. One of the things I, I strive to, when I thought about what city government needs is vision, but as well as persons who are looking at the nuts, bolts, and details of it. So my next question, my question that's going to come to Mr. Shorter is, how will you, as I understand your background in organizational management, how will you wrap your hands around this beast called city government first? In terms of knowledge and being able to drive the work?
No, Councilmember, I really appreciate that question. It, it is important, really, in these, in these kinds of roles, leadership roles, that it, it is clear that we do this work really in support of the staff and workforce. So you will often hear me celebrating our workforce and celebrating our staff because it is our, our leaders, our directors, our commissioners, and our deputy mayors and others who, who do just the amazing work of making sure that this government runs. And so in terms of my ability to, to understand the breadth and width of our day-to-day operations, it is through those leaders, through the, the men and women who already are here and running our government that I'll, that I'll be able to manage and understand the organization. So how we structure, how we get information to funnel through our organization and across our organization is really one of the, sort of big secrets, if you will, of this profession, that, that ultimately is how we are able to be effective, just knowing what is happening with, with the organization and the thousands of employees that work on our behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter. My next question is more so related to management style. And I often find, from our conversation, that you tend to lead with candor. And my question is, how will you install that culture within our leadership in city government?
I definitely appreciate that question. And I, I really do believe that the workforce will mirror, to a large extent, the leadership. And so ultimately, I'm committed to making sure that we are, that we are transparent as a government in that ultimately, in terms of my own approach and style, that I'm expecting transparency, I'm expecting accountability, but I'm also expecting innovation and ingenuity. And so ultimately, the only way we can get that from our workforce, the ideas, the excitement from, from, from our employees, frontline supervisors, managers, directors, commissioners, et cetera, is by managing without the sense of fear. So we, we want to stabilize our organization, we want to stabilize our government, we want to invite creativity, invite innovation. And the way we do that is by rewarding it and recognizing it when it occurs. And so in terms of my own approach, I am one who, I like to get involved. When I was Director of Public Works, I actually spent a full day on the back of a trash truck. And I will say that the, that the men and women who do that work every day appreciated seeing their director understanding what they have to go through each and every day. And so here, I will say in terms of my style and my approach here in Baltimore, it's going to be the same. I want to be able to understand work alongside and understand the different aspects of our operation, but, but also expect and have very high standards for our leaders and, and our employees. This is very much in line with the mayor's expectations and very high standards. And, and I will also say that in terms of our, our forward vision for this government, the mayor has really described in detail the need for us to be a government that serves this, this city better. And so there, there will certainly be a need for us to reexamine and evaluate processes and systems within the government, and I'm expecting that the workforce will help in that process.
Thank you so much. I go back to the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and all of you who've joined us today. Similarly, I've had pretty good initial experiences with Mr. Shorter. So I'm excited about this nomination moving forward. The, the question, or just to raise what we talked about, one of, one of the issues that we talked about was sort of like the interaction with the council. What are the types of, like, how do you, you see having a strong working relationship with the legislators in this body who are often, despite, you know, our, our main job description being, you know, writing policy, we, we do spend a tremendous amount of time helping constituents with day-to-day issues and, and, and working with the agencies to resolve them. How do you see you, you taking on this role and maintaining, you know, very strong communication, feedback, collaboration? What does that look like for you in, in working with the, the county, city council?
Appreciate that question, Councilmember. And what I'll say is that I expect to, to be working with you all very directly. And ultimately, as elected officials, I'm here to serve you as well. All, you know, and so your, your issues around constituent matter, constituent matters, your policy vision, these are all ultimately, I need to be in a position always to answer questions that you may have to formulate those policy decisions and proposals. And so we want to make sure that our agency directors and commissioners are as responsive as possible as they are preparing for hearings and, and your oversight. I think where there are challenges there or need for us to provide clarity, I always want to be in a position, working with our chief of staff and our, in our mayor's office, respond, you know, legislative affairs, that, that we are as responsive as possible. our response, you know, legislative affairs, that, that we are as responsive as possible and fully understanding that there will be times when a lot of information is, is needed in order to prepare for hearings. We want to make sure that we are thoughtful about what that means in terms of getting information to you and getting information to the other committee members. So I hope that answers your, your question.
And, and I look forward to that. The, the second question I had was, and I'm glad the, the chair raised this issue of, he gave the example of open, open checkbook and, and other sort of ways that we can make city government more transparent for our constituents and residents in the city of Baltimore. What are your perspectives, to narrow that a little bit, around things like participatory budgeting or other mechanisms in which we can engage and be more transparent about the budget process, getting resident voices engaged in that process so that, you know, the, the way that we're spending tax dollars is, is more reflective of what people in the city want and need?
No, I de- I really appreciate that question. I'll say in terms of participatory budgeting, outcome-based budgeting, that what I have taught, been talking to the mayor about and understand moving forward, we are interested in making sure that, and I think this is a core element of, of how, how successful tier-one cities move forward, working with you and your council colleagues and our, our residents and public to, through a strategic planning process, be clear about what our priorities are. And once we are clear about priorities, strategic priorities, it makes budgeting, it makes performance management, it makes daily operations much more seamless. Because what it means is that we, as a community, as a city, have agreed, whether those are 10 priorities or 12 priorities or, or less, we've agreed that those priorities will ultimately reign supreme and that our budgets, our performance plans, and the way that we resource our staff will all be in line with those priorities. So that's my hope. And I will also say that working with the mayor, our next year's budget cycle, my hope is that we will be informed by a strategic planning process that we've been through together.
Awesome. Thank you. Looking forward to that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my few questions.
Okay, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And really excited to see Acting Administrator Shorter up for consideration. You know, I was really excited from our conversation, the way you think, the way you approach issues. Clearly, a very intelligent person, but also emotionally intelligent, which I think is going to be really important in your job. You know, I, you know, we, we, we're fortunate here in Baltimore to have been the first city to use data analytics and performance management to manage city government. And that's, that's with our City Stat program. You know, I, I'm, I'm really curious what your plan is for City Stat. I think it's a great opportunity if, if approached the right way. So what are your thoughts about City Stat and what are your plans for it going forward?
Appreciate that question. So I, I jumped off of a City Stat virtual, a virtual City Stat right before calling in here. So we are still very much utilizing the, the stat tool for, for performance, performance management. It is, in the sessions that I have been able to sit in on, namely recycle, our recycling stat and recycle program, as well as police stat, the, the teams that are responsible for preparing those stats are exceptional. And so I'm really excited about and really proud of the Office of Performance and Innovation and all of the work that they've done and continue to do. I think you're absolutely right. We are going to be strategic as we move forward in terms of the types of stats that we do with the mayor's leadership. I will say that the stat process alone is not a man, performance management framework. And so I mentioned a second ago what it means to have performance plans and to have an, an overall, sort of overall agency performance plans as well as individual performance evaluations that align up with the city's strategic plan. So I will say that the stat program, combined with a performance management framework, will really set this city on a course that aligns so much of what we do strategically. And so performance, the performance team and performance stat plays a very big role.
Thank you. And of course, always happy to chop it up with you on City Stat stuff. The other question I had was with regard to the culture piece, and I think Councilman Torrance touched on this, and I appreciate your, your comments on candor and, and building that culture. Another major hurdle that I, you know, in, in my time working for the city before becoming a councilman was around silos. And I realized very quickly that there are silos between agencies and within agencies that can sometimes make things difficult. So I'm curious, what are your thoughts on how to break down some of those silos or work across those silos to have an effective and efficient government? To give you an example, we had a hearing just last week on a bill proposed by Councilman Burnett, I believe, around addressing code enforcement issues, but things like that and otherwise, certainly when we look at our public safety issues, they're all, they're often multifaceted and unfortunately, our, our systems are sometimes too rigid to adjust for that. Have you, have you thought at all about that and how you might want to address it?
I have, and, and appreciate that I'm able to sort of say a few words about this. This is one of the reasons that city administrators exist, to, to help with the flow of information and coordinate the work of this government. And so you're absolutely right. Left, left alone, agencies will focus on their mission, they will focus on their priorities and, and a focus on their, their advocacy and the stakeholders. And so it is how, how we bring agencies together, the sequence at which we meet and expectations when we do, that problems will be solved by the agencies and by the agency staff and not necessarily only by, by my involvement or the folks who report directly to me. That really sets the course for it. And so I will give an example on the code enforcement issue. What I would say is that the, the city administrator's office should not be in a position where we are doing this work for the agencies, that ultimately, they are responsible for the work. I think where we play a very big role is making sure that we are there to steer, to guide. And when we are in a situation where we have a bad actor, that we've created a system where those agencies can work together, whether it's via a task force or that there is some ceiling that has been hit in terms of the number of times we've had to go to that location or the, the, the challenges at the location when an inspector goes, that it becomes clear we need more support here and that ultimately, we're, I am setting, responsible for setting up a system, but that becomes much more seamless and much easier to do. So I hope that answers, answers the question.
It does. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next up. All right, the order just changed over here. I guess somebody logged off. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was sitting here and listening to the leaders that you definitely put forth to just speak on your credibility and character, and it just shows how you're definitely a well-rounded person. And then for you to take the time and also set up meetings with each one of us separately and answering the quest, our, our questions individually. I just, I, I want to give a shout out to one of the persons that I just know just from longstanding, and that's Stacy Rogers, is just a well-rounded person, and we go way back. So just her taking the time to, to speak on your behalf has really helped me out in, in my decision-making. I, you know that Baltimore City has, is a 14-member council and just stretched very far. And I, I can step out there and say that civic engagement now is very important in our city. And I know, and I, you have mentioned, and, and the people on your panel that you brought forth have mentioned your civic engagement, and that has just been very important in my eyes with having that collaboration. So Jess, I just have one question to piggyback on. Councilman Burnett really kind of touched what I was very much interested in, in how you are going, do you have a plan to, for individual engagement? I know we're in COVID, but do you have a plan for that individual engagement for each 14-member council districts? Because, you know, our setup is, you know, it's a little different from DC, it's different from Detroit. By the way, I, I'm very close to the present president of the DC, I mean, of the Detroit Council. So, you know, the, all these different, all these cities are set up a little different from Baltimore. So if you could just kind of explain, if you have a plan set forth for each of us individually to continue that community engagement, because it's important that you know how our districts and how the people and residents in our areas are set up.
No, I, I definitely appreciate that question, and, and my expectation is that I'm going to continue that, that, that ultimately, the, I've been fortunate enough to, to, to attend at least two dozen or so Community and Neighborhood Association meetings, and I've been invited to, to more. Some of you have individually invited me. My expectation is that that will continue. And it was not just for my introduction to Baltimore, but that I will continue to be engaged in that way. I will also say, I don't know that I could serve this mayor well if I was, if I was not available to each of you continuously as well. So it is the nature of this work that I'm going to be available and, and, and that I'm here, here for you as an elected official.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Mr. Shorter, thanks a lot for being here. Unfortunately, I missed some of the panelists that spoke. I have a, I had a bill and planning commission, but I got the gist of it. And I, and I appreciate that you'll be on my town hall next Wednesday, so I'm looking forward to that. And so are my constituents. I wanted, I have several questions. One, but I only get two at the moment, is I want to follow up on Councilman Burnett's question about the interaction between the council and your office. We not only do legislation, but we are swimming in constituent issues. Two that I have right now that are coming to me are people have paid their taxes, but it was not put in the right account, and therefore they're on the tax sale roll, which you know, that's an important issue for me, and also water bills, everything about the water bills. So how is it that, you know, we, we certainly will work with our agency contacts on these, but do we then, especially in this interim time where you're learning, go to you and say, hey, I'm having this issue and this has to be solved? Or do we, so what is that interaction? If it doesn't get solved, do we go up to you? How does that interaction work when we have these major issues?
No, I appreciate that, Councilmember. And I'll say that my expectation and the mayor's expectation is that we have leaders, these, our department directors and commissioners are, are very, very capable. And if that fails, if for whatever reason there is a failure in our ability to communicate, then the expectation is that I'm involved. I'll also say that please know that I'm going to be pulling in the commissioners or the directors into the conversation at some point, because what I don't want to do is do the job for them, that in, in that ultimately, in my assessing leaders, that assessment will ultimately, or include their ability to navigate and negotiate when there are constituent issues. And so in terms of my involvement, I am always going to be here and available, but the expectation is that the city leader, who is responsible for that particular issue, that they're involved and managing to get a resolution. This is, in terms of water bills, this is one of the issues that the mayor made very clear to me before even coming to Baltimore, that this was a, a top priority. And this is why we have worked so hard to make sure that we are recruiting a Department of Public Works Director who has the skill set and the capability and the experience to lead an agency that has a number of strategic issues that it has to deal with. And so I, I hope that answers the question that, that ultimately, we have to get a public works director named and in place as soon as possible so that we can get some of these more structural issues resolved. It won't be overnight, but we have to get to the, we have to get in the process of correcting these systems issues. And then on, on matters generally, the expectation is that our agency directors and commissioners are a part of the process when a failure occurs. So again, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, well, part of my question was just to let you know some of the big things that we're dealing with, and I would imagine that you're learning that along the way. My second question is sort of following up from what you just said. So are the agency, that you are working in tandem with the mayor to hire agency heads? Because there's more than one agency head that the mayor has said that he wants to hire. Will you be going through the process for all of the agency heads to do performance management and performance to then determine whether, you know, there's, there's a shift that needs to be there? What is the situation now?
The, the assessment is ongoing and continues. And so what I would say is that I'm working, that every agency leader who is on board with the, with, with us right now, the expectation is that they are capable and that they're able to handle, handle the role. And if, for whatever reason, that isn't as clear anymore, we will make decisions at that time that we need to maybe go in a different direction. I will say that our leaders are start, for me, that our leaders are starting from a, a place of success and, and that, you know, my, you know, I'm coming to this with the lens that our folk, that our folks are capable until proven otherwise. And I, and so I think I answered that. Oh, in terms of executive recruitment, the mayor, yes, that ultimately, our leaders are working for the mayor. And so we are not making executive hires without the mayor's approval. But executive recruitment and onboarding is a priority. If we want our agencies, agencies to be effective, we want our, 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 our programs to improve, then we have to be able to recruit and then onboard. And when I say onboard, be in a position where we have the kinds of benefits and incentives that our sister and brother cities have. It is competitive. And when we want the kinds of public administrators that have the ability to go to other places, we have to have the ability to offer them the same kinds of incentives and benefits for relocation, if that is required, for housing temporarily, if that is required, so that we can get, again, get the kinds of leaders here who can help us solve some of these problems and put us on a path to becoming a tier-one city, the tier-one city we want to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for my other questions at next round. Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was locating my mute button. My sincere apologies.
My sincere apologies. Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me, I don't necessarily have a question, but I have two comments that I'll keep brief, under two minutes total for Mr. Shorter. That's okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number one, I want to say, and I think all of my colleagues, especially those that are returning to the council this year from last term, know that I was the most vocal opponent of a city administrator structure within city government. I think I was the only no vote on multiple occasions on that. I must say that I have been absolutely incredibly impressed with Mr. Shorter in the short time that he has been here. We've only worked on two or three issues together in that time. But his professionalism, his intellect, his empathy, his ability to dive deep into issues that may seem like they are not a big deal, but understanding why those issues can be a big deal to a lot of people is unparalleled in my experience in city government. And I believe the structure that has been set up, I had this conversation with the mayor over the weekend. We actually jokingly talked about it, myself, the mayor, and Mr. Shorter last night during a community meeting where the mayor and he presented. I have certainly come around. And I believe that Chris's background, Chris's experiences, the way that Chris views problems and the opportunities for solutions is exactly what we need in the city of Baltimore right now. My only criticism of the mayor with respect to this is that he hasn't figured out a way to go out and hire more Chris Shorters. So I am a firm believer in that. Chris has my 100% support. My second comment is, and Chris, we've talked about this in passing, and I just want to be upfront about this and I want this on the record. We have some things that are very systemically broken in city government. First and foremost, I think it's our ability to communicate with our constituency. And that constituency is residents and local businesses. We are inefficient in a number of different areas. We provide poor customer service in many areas despite having incredibly talented and committed people in our city. That's not a shot at any specific agency or municipal employee. I think that's a culture issue and a process issue. We have HR recruitment challenges, and the list goes on and on and on. But I'll leave with this one thought. We have very, very significant challenges in the city. And Chris, we need to talk about becoming a tier-one or a tier-A city, which we all know Baltimore City has the potential to be, especially under the leadership of Mayor Scott and Council President Mosby and the folks that we have in place in city government and the executive branch. I'll just throw out there, gun violence, quality of education, the opioid epidemic, et cetera, so on and so forth. We're all familiar with what those challenges are. But I'm going to say this, and I want to be clear about it. If we can't figure out how to do the little things, and that's one of the reasons why I've become such a firm believer in Chris's ability to help lead the city. If we can't do the little, simple things, like figuring out how to effectively roll out a municipal recycling can program, which is something that we're going to be dealing with, which I'm confident because of Chris's involvement, we're going to get things like that right. If we can't do those simple little things, we might as well forget about figuring out how to get violent crime under control and how to improve the quality of our school system and how to get the opioid epidemic under control. And that's why I think it's so important that we have someone who's focused on the big picture and is focused on those little process pieces as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I truly appreciate you indulging me and kind of going against the committee's rules and sharing comments instead of questions. And, you know, please know that Chris has my full 100% support. And, you know, if I'm permitted to not as the chair of the committee, Chris is certainly welcome to respond to my second series of comments related to the big challenges versus the little ones and the things that are broken in city government.
Happy to respond. And it is, that is the magic of doing this work. It is not just about me as an individual leader, but about all of the leaders that represent our government. And so my feeling is that if we empower them the right way, we give them the tools that they need to be effective leaders, that they give their teams, staff, managers, supervisors, the tools that they need, that it's fair for us to have high expectations for getting the little things right and for getting the big strategic things right. And so you're absolutely right. When it comes to rolling out new programs, that those are the kinds of opportunities to make sure that our residents feel competence back in our government. And so we have work to do. I am clear about that. And it's honestly the reason that I'm here, that ultimately, for me, this is the work that I've chosen to dedicate my life to. And in dealing with tough issues and tough problems is the reason that I wanted to join the city government. So I appreciate, very much appreciate the comments, Councilmember, and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Shorter, in part of your introduction, you had mentioned something about a deputy city administrator. Has there been somebody selected or you were just talking about having that position in general?
No. So Daniel Ramos, who is here, longstanding leader in this government, has been appointed as the deputy city administrator. I believe he has worked with many of you directly. And if not, I'm certainly sure he will. He knows the city very well and the government systems very well. So he has been selected by our mayor as the deputy.
Oh, wow. Okay, I guess I missed that memo. Definitely know him very well. I just didn't know he was the person you were referring to. The other question I had was within the city administrator position. I mean, are you essentially like a proxy for the mayor? Do you have the ability to make every day-to-day decision that the mayor has? Or do you have to just report to the mayor? Like, if you see something that's a problem, do you have the ability to, you know, to order an agency director to do so? Or, I'm just trying to understand the hierarchy a little bit.
Well, I am here to implement the mayor's vision. So ultimately, it's on me to make sure that I've set up a communications structure so that I'm giving the mayor what, the information he needs to make good decisions and that he's able to give me the sort of authorization to move forward with certain decisions. I will say that managing the day-to-day government of the, the day-to-day operations of the government will certainly involve decisions that the mayor wouldn't necessarily need to be involved in. But for strategic issues, I am absolutely checking in, checking in with the mayor to make sure that it is in line with commitments made and in line with the vision that he has.
Got you. So you're saying, so the position is still like sort of forming with, you know, the specific authority? Is that what I'm understanding?
Help me.
I mean, let's just throw something out there, right? There's an issue in any agency, right? Agency director says, I want to do X, Y, and Z. You say, no, I want you to do ABC. Are they required to listen to you just like they would be required to listen to the mayor? Or do you have to go to the mayor and get authority from the mayor to order an agency to make a decision?
No, the expectation is that they are following my guidance. And I will say publicly that that guidance will come oftentimes with the confidence that I'm in line with the mayor's vision. But, you know, it is, the expectation is that, for the front of mayor is that, as the city's administrator, that I'm making the call.
Got you. Okay, I'll move on to everybody else's second question. I'm just going to keep it in order as I see you. Councilwoman Ramos.
I just went. I don't know if any others want to go before me before I go. Okay, thanks. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of other questions. I have to say that since Mayor Scott has taken office, I have seen a difference in the optimism, if you will, of some of our agencies where, you know, in the past, we've frequently heard, no, we can't do that. But now we're hearing, let's think about that. Let's see if we can do that. And so it sounds to me like your attitude is similar in terms of, you know, being able to actually look and say, hey, you know, that might be interesting. So if we as legislators come to you saying, hey, we have an innovative idea, like Councilman Florence and I, and if I has, if I, I think I told you, you know, working on Baltimore's land bank, which is in the transition plan, you know, what, I guess the question would be, what is your process? I mean, you would come up and you would be able to say, yeah, let's do it, or I got to check with the mayor first. You know, let's see if we can do that. I mean, these are kind of big things that this council wants to do, and we have innovative ideas. So we want to see how you would, how we would work together on making those happen.
Sure. Now, what else, I'll say, so the mayor's chief of staff, Michael Huber, will play a very big role in how we engage and make sure that you and your staff have the kind of support from the city that you need so that those ideas, the more informal and the formal, through bills and votes, that those things are translated properly to our organization in that the direction and guidance is given to our agency leaders. We are inviting that innovation, though. I will tell you that it gets me excited to hear that our elected officials are coming with ideas, coming with the energy and that we are able to, you know, make our organization and make our city better. So you certainly should know that that is welcomed and that we will become a better city because of it.
Thank you. And my next question is going back to the procurement work. I was really excited to see that this is moving forward as the former chair of the Baltimore Hispanic Chamber and then just also a resident having to deal with the construction on Greenmount Avenue for a million years. You know, having, really looking at the procurement process is going to be extremely important. I think there are members like myself and members and my colleagues that want to be involved in that. So I get, I understand that you're doing a sort of top-down assessment. And I wonder how, I guess it depends on the outcome of the assessment, but how, because I'm sure there's going to be laws that we have to change in order to make that procurement process work. So hopefully that we can be involved in that process from the get-go in order to come up with great solutions for addressing our procurement challenges.
Yeah, definitely appreciate that. And please, no, we fully intend to work with the council president's office and work with our comptroller to identify representatives to be involved. The idea here, and in fact, I'm on schedule to meet with the council president's office and the comptroller's office tomorrow about the procurement reform effort and what that will look like. Ultimately, the vision forward is that, once selected, that the vendor who wins this RFP will be reporting into a steering committee made up of a representative from council, a representative from the comptroller's office, and the agency head from finance and IT, along with me, in that we are getting updates from that vendor on how they're engaging our residents, how they're engaging vendors, how they're engaging you as elected officials. Ultimately, the recommendations that they come back, how they're engaging staff, the staff who actually do this work every day. So this process will involve a good amount of focus groups, surveying and making sure that they fully understand how the process currently works. And then bringing to bear all kinds of recommendations on how, whether it's IT, information technology tools, personnel, structure, and structural changes, and even how it is organized and who has what authority, that all of those recommendations will be coming to us for us to implement. And you are absolutely right that this will likely result in the need for us to make changes to our code related to procurement. So I hope that answers the question in terms of how all of the stakeholders associated with procurement will be involved in the process.
Yes, it does. Thanks very much. I have more questions, but that's two for now. I don't know whether my other colleagues have other questions.
This is the second round. You can keep going if you got a couple more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one last one. I wanted to touch base again about, you know, sort of the interaction between the agencies, your office and our office. So is it just two of you in your office? Or you can have others that, you know, work with the agency heads? And I guess one of the, I'm a firm believer in the city administrator, first of all. But I'm just kind of wondering about, there was always a criticism that that'd be a next line of bureaucracy. And so I want you to, if you can, to clarify what that is going to look like in terms of your office and interacting with the agencies. And you're not hiring, you know, deputy administrators for every subject, you know, that kind of thing. Can you explain this a little bit more? Who's in your office and how that works?
Sure. So in terms of how we are managing each portfolio or priority kind of portfolio, so for public safety agencies, our deputy mayor for public safety, meaning you know Sunny, she is serving as our deputy mayor for public safety. There's also a deputy mayor for community and economic development that was just recently announced, Ted Carter. And he will start with the city in a few weeks. We are in search for a deputy mayor for equity, health, and human services and hope that in the coming weeks, we'll be able to announce the selection there of a top candidate. And then the deputy city administrator, Daniel Ramos, who is, again, already here and already, and has been serving the city for quite some time. Through that group of leaders, we hope to be in touch with and able to get information from and help make swift decisions with agency leaders. So that's the way it's structured. And I'll say to you that that group of leaders, that we are meeting throughout the week to make sure that we're getting information from agencies, especially information where we need decisions made.
If I can follow up, Mr. Chair. So the deputy mayors, they work for the mayor, but they're on your team to try to address some of these bigger issues plus some very, you know, detail-oriented issues?
Well, we all work for the mayor. And so they are policy leaders and will be dealing with, for example, when you all have questions about where, for example, a policy decision might take us or if you have questions about how, what role some agencies or agency plays, that it will likely be the deputy mayors or the deputy city administrator, I, who are funneling those questions to the agencies and getting responses back. And so they, the deputy mayors will work very closely with the mayor. But in terms of how we improve our government and structures that make our government strong, that, yes, they'll be working with me and reporting to me day-to-day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Shorter, for cheating.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council Vice President Middleton. And I think the girls over here intended to come to the last hearing. But they're here for this one. But if you have any other follow-up questions, you can go ahead.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last question for me. As you know, this city is, city government is very unionized. There are represented, union representatives from Cub, ASME, the police, the fire department, very strong protectors of working conditions and salaries for the lowest-paid workers, the, from 3-1-1 to sanitation and so on. I just like, I would like you to just express your feelings on that and how you will continue to keep the communication going with that. As you know, we have this problem with Workday right now. And of course, the union... As you know, we have this problem with Workday right now, and of course, the unions are together and very upset about what's going on with paychecks. And, you know, it's, as we're in COVID right now, again, there's some employees that have not received paychecks or very little, and our unions are together and frustrated. And, you know, this is very important because it's, you know, they call on us, and they also share things with us. So I just like you to comment on your support of the unions of our city. I think you know as well that we had, this city had started the first apprenticeship system in this country. And we want to, we, every term, we tried to expand that through every agency. Just speak a bit of that, because it's just very important now, especially what's the crisis situation that we're going through.
Very much. I'll say that I am one who values labor-management partnership, and I'll say that we have, and even from the days of being director at Public Works, the role that collective bargaining plays in making sure that employees have appropriate working conditions, that they have representation is extremely important. And so have certainly have a history of forging partnership with labor, really in every role that I've taken. Here, I have been, yes, very involved in making sure that we are meeting with our labor leaders. I've personally facilitated the calls with our labor, labor leaders around Workday, and will say that I have seen some absolutely amazing improvements from day one. So that first pay cycle is when I started with Baltimore City, and today have seen a almost night-and-day difference in terms of the work of getting our employees paid timely and employees entering time. I think there's still work to be done, especially on retirees. That might be a separate issue than Workday, though. But the point is clear, and your point is clear, that we have to get the system right, that our employees have to have confidence that they're going to get, that they're going to get paid, and they're going to get paid timely. I mentioned in my prepared remarks, for example, of rewards and recognition program, we have to do that in partnership with labor. If we are going to recognize good performers, recognize employees who have tenure with the city, that ultimately, our labor leaders have to be on board and partner in that work. And so, no, you have and me, someone who absolutely values our labor leaders, there is absolutely no way you can run a government this size without understanding the value of labor.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
No further questions. Look forward to supporting you.
Councilman Torrance?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Mr. Shorter, I just have one last question, because a follow-up to Councilman Conway about city staff. What is your opinion on improvement science in terms of city agencies? Because one of the things I've found is that in city government in Baltimore City, we're not proactively using data to solve problems right away or create new systems. So I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. Well, so Baltimore is the home of this, and I will say that ultimately, this is exactly why the stat process exists, and why I like to always sort of make sure I make the distinction between measuring, monitoring, and reporting out on performance and key indicators associated with performance, and the difference between that and having a stat program that provides for continuous quality improvement, especially in areas where there are performance deficiencies or we want to enhance performance. So the science behind that, meaning the data that we use, how we use it, becomes critically important. And what I will say is that we have an extremely talented group of public servants here in Baltimore, working in OPI or the Office of Performance and Innovation, who understand that. I think about the innovation team, and, I mean, their whole, the whole model is one of using behavioral science to better predict how we're going to, how residents react to changes in our service delivery model, and what changes to our service model will do in terms of resident and citizen behavior. So it plays a very big role. I certainly understand that, and I believe that our team understands it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter.
Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Everything, my other question was already answered. Looking forward to bringing you aboard, Mr. Shorter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm good. Look forward to supporting Mr. Shorter.
Okay. Yeah, last call. Anybody have any more questions before we put this to a vote? Okay. With no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Costello?
Second.
Motion by Costello, second by Conway. We'll take a roll call.
So, we ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ballot motion. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President votes aye. Member Ramos?
Aye.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Chair, a seven, both any affirmative, no negatives. May I can go to the second rule at the next meeting?
All right. Thank you very much, Richard. Mr. Shorter, congratulations. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to moving this to the full council.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you all for the time today. It really means a lot to have been able to spend this much time with you, and I look forward to supporting you all.
I think you owe Mr. Schindler dinner. He's been here the whole time, so.
You know, I'm not surprised. He's been such an amazing support and mentor over the years. I'm not surprised that he stayed on.
My pleasure to be here and wish all of you well. I have to admit, I've been doing some multitasking, but I love the conversation and your kids, Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.